Okay, you're good to go.
All right, I'd like to call the media council to order and the first item on the agenda would be, I'd like to acknowledge the, we're on the unconceited lands of the Migma people. And the next item would be a moment of silent contemplation. All right, the first item on the agenda with the approval or amendments of the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
So moved in second, is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All right. Contrary, motion is passed. Next item would be approval in minutes of April 21st, 20, and April 29th, 2020, regular meeting of council.
So moved.
Second, moved in second, any further discussion?
Question.
Call them the question, all in favor, please raise the right hand.
Aye.
All right. Contrary, motion is passed. The next item on the agenda would be the, we're a little delayed in our time, but the municipal heritage registration hearing, Oak Island Cemetery, I believe Council Rhino wishes to declare conflict and I'll turn it over to staff for the presentation.
Charlie, I have a message saying the host is disabled participant screen sharing. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden, I could bring the script up for councils to read, for you to read through.
I have it right here.
Okay, okay.
I have one too, Rachel, print it off.
Okay.
Yeah, I printed mine off also, so. So councillor, this evening, we have one item on the hearing agenda scheduled will begin at seven. We're a little late due to technical difficulties. The purpose of this hearing is for council to hear input from the property owner prior to making a decision on the request to the representatives of the property owners who have chosen to participate this morning. Welcome, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. Tonight council may approve, reject or defer its decision on the request to a later date. Council approval is required for the registration to proceed. I will now ask the municipal clerk to outline when the notice was sent to the property owner.
Mr. Warden, a notice of recommendation for registration as a municipal heritage property was mailed to a representative of the property owner on April 22nd, 2020. The notice gave the date, time, and how they can participate in the hearing. The hearing is now, was going to be livestreamed through the municipal website and YouTube, and it will be available on the public website and YouTube channel tomorrow morning.
Councillors, on the hearing scheduled, is a request from Maitland Community Cemeteries to register the Oak Island Cemetery as a municipal heritage property. I will now ask the Chair of Planning Advisory Committee to present his report.
Thank you, Warden. Planning Advisory Committee has considered the request on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff's reports, completed their evaluation, and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Mr. Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the request.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So the cemetery, it's the Oak Island Cemetery in Maitland. It's generally in a good state of repair with some repair work to the monuments having been undertook by community members. Some of the more unique headstones and monuments include some tall metal structures with metal leaves detailing the top. And the Lawrence, the Lawrence family burial area includes a fence marking out the two monuments within this burial area. So we can see some photographs here of some of the monuments within the Oak Island Cemetery. So this is the Lawrence family monument, and then this also, this one down here on the left-hand side at the bottom, that's also within that fenced-in area. And this is just another photograph of the cemetery. So shipbuilding was a foundation of Maitland's economy during the 19th century. There were about a dozen shipyards in the vicinity of Maitland from which hundreds of wooden vessels were launched, including the famous W. William D. Lawrence, which was launched in 1874. And at that time, it was the largest wooden ship ever built in the Maritimes. It's in the Oak Island Cemetery that many of the people involved in the Maitland shipbuilding industry were buried. In particular, William Dawson Lawrence is provincially known, and also a museum in Maitland is named after him. And I added a bio on Lawrence himself in the staff report, Appendix D. Also included in the burial location is Captain Douglas, Captain Ellis, and Captain Thomas Roy. Shipbuilding is an important part of the history of Maitland and the cemetery, and people buried in the cemetery serves as a reminder to the contribution that these people provide to the history. It's still an active cemetery, so its history is still evolving. And staff did an assessment of the cemetery against criteria for the cemetery and assigned a score of 74. A minimum of 50 points is required before council can consider a heritage registration. At the February 2020 meeting of Planning Advisory Committee, staff recommended approval of the registration as a municipal heritage property. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now ask as a representative of the property owners, any comments? Keith Rhino?
It just, I guess, I'd just like to say it only makes sense to put this cemetery into heritage registration designation for which you've seen WD Lawrence and many shipbuilding captains have been buried there. It is an active cemetery and it still goes on. And by doing so, I think it's kind of honoring the WD Lawrence's and all the shipbuilding captains. And I do believe that running a cemetery is quite an undertaking these times. And by registering this, this may open other avenues of funding through grants and so on to be able to keep this as a cemetery for the, for the public. And so that's what I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of staff have any final comments?
No.
You good, Rachel and John?
Yes.
Mr. Warden, we've lost our chairperson, and he tells me he's unable to sign back in.
Ooh. Possibly, maybe.
He's arriving now, he's arriving.
You're back, Wayne? Wayne, I just asked the Chair of Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation, if you can hear me.
Yeah, Ken, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Love this Zoom. Planning Advisory Committee has heritage advisory committee recommends to council, that council approve the registration of the Oak Island Cemetery in Maitland as a municipal heritage property. As Chair of PAC, I so move.
Second it.
Going to move her in a seconder, is there any final questions or comments from municipal councillors? Seeing none, I'll ask for the question.
Question.
Question's been called, we'll all raise our right hands, leave them up, do we do a count? Okay, contrary, motion is passed. The, the next item on the agenda would be correspondence for information, councillors, it's been circulated. Does anybody wish to raise any of the correspondence? Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Two things, letter number 40, May 21st, 2020, from Kevin Neat Clayton Developments. Could that be brought up on the screen? Thank, thank you. I just simply, for residents to see that the Clayton Development Plan is back to being very close to what they would have seen at the public information meetings online and in the original questionnaires, thank you.
Okay, does anybody wants to comment? I know that staff had looked at this today and we, although they've withdrawn it, it is a huge financial impact to the area. It's almost $2.5 million worth of money we'll lose over the next 20 years. But if that's the, if that's their wish, then we'll move forward with it the way it is. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just one other letter, if I may, it was letter number nine. It was from the Minister of Municipal Affairs Chuck Porter to a District Two resident. If that could be just brought up, please. The question that I had from the resident, and in a nutshell, what does it mean by a procedural error? And could staff just provide just a real quick example?
Well, procedural error would be something like if the municipality didn't advertise a public hearing in accordance with the MGA or something like that. This application actually has been appealed to the URB now. And there are, you know, our solicitors dealing with those issues, and it's actually on a conference call with the board tomorrow to discuss it.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, thank you, staff.
Councillor Musa?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. About, about the first letter, I think the councillors start having problem with the J block, but at the end, when we know that the bridge is going to happen and it's going to be a good thing for the municipality, I think we all agreed on it, so I don't know if they got us wrong or that's what I thought.
I mean, it's the proponent watched the executive committee meeting, and they felt that they don't want to jeopardize their development. And if councillors feel strong about it, they'd rather withdraw than chance losing the whole development moving forward. They're very keen to get it moving in a very, you know, they have a timeline that they want to get moving this summer, so.
So can we have a show of hands for the, who's on, who's with it and who's without?
No, I don't think at this time we can do a vote, but I have two councillors at least wishing to speak. Councillor McGinnis?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I appreciated their letter because it seemed to me that they recognized that there, there was some big concern about removing the green space, but they also indicated in their letter that they will have that bridge. They will not change any of the green space, if I'm reading it correctly, they will not change any of the green space provisions that are in there. And they also indicated that that particular building would go into another block. I forget, I think it might have been I, further down the road, should it be commercially beneficial to them to do that. So if I'm reading it correctly, then we, we are, we're dealing with a group who I think very much appreciates the desire for green space, the need for the bridge connectivity, but also that all of the residents that are going to belong in this new community will feel better about what the developer has in mind. So I like what they've offered, and I would support that, thank you.
Councillor Rolston?
Yes, I'd echo Councillor McGinnis's comments and just say, if I remember correctly, the final vote at executive, there were 13 members, including the two public members, and it was seven to six at that time. So given that the proponent wishes to remove Block J and has allowed themselves some flexibility to add those two apartment buildings back in at a later date in another area of the development that wouldn't affect the green space, then I think it's a, you know, I think it's a pretty decent compromise, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, I was a little surprised to see the letter come in, but in the same respect, happy to see it. Shaw's always wanted to do what's right for the community. My experience with them has always been that they've always done what is right for the community, and they wanted to work, you know, with staff and with council to build, you know, this, this development that will be a benefit to everybody. So I'm, I'm supportive of this letter, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Warden Perry? You're muted, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just through to staff, I know that Block J was part of the negotiations, and with that came the active transportation routes and all of some of the other developments with that. With Block J going away, has that impacted any of the things that were negotiated for during the development agreement as far as the active transportation routes go?
Through you, Mr. Warden, no. They make it clear in the letter that all the things we negotiated are still there. The park gets a little bit bigger, and that's the only difference.
Well, that, that, that's good, I just wanted to confirm that because sometimes what's said in the letter and what's actually negotiated and what the criteria was, as for the development agreement, I want to make sure nothing was tied to Block J, thank you.
I have no one else to speak, I don't know, Eli, did that go everywhere you wanted it to have comments made on?
Yes, yes, Mr. Warden, and I only mention it because when you said, you mentioned like the loss for the municipality for the Kivol community, so I thought they're not, as I understood first from their letter, that they're gonna look for another option to put those two apartment building. But when you mentioned the loss, I thought they took them altogether, that's why I asked, thank you.
I guess the staff have done a financial impact study, so if, if those two apartments had been built, we would have been able to spend $2.5 million on something else from the tax revenue that they would have generated, so.
Through you, Mr. Warden. The amount is about $170,000 a year if they were to build those six-story buildings there, which is just over $3 million over 20-year period. But my understanding, John, is they've requested that they can put that, those apartment buildings in the upper section in lieu of another building, so it's not, where is it, or will it fit in there somewhere?
It wasn't through Mr. Warden, it wasn't a direct trade-off with Block J. They, I guess, realized late that some flexibility they wanted in the DA wasn't there to be able to put some residential on Block I if the commercial land wasn't selling the way they want it or hope that it does. But if the commercial land sells the way they hope it does, and they won't put residential there, it's just kind of a backup option for them. But that would also still have to come back to council, so if they do want to make that switch, they'll come back to you for amendment to their DA.
Yeah. All right, so that concludes, anybody asking about any correspondence for information? Is there any further items? If not, we'll move on to correspondence for decision, I believe we had one come up in the last day or so.
Charlie and I didn't actually talk about who was going to present this, Mr. Warden. She did the legwork, but I can probably present the issue. The, back in the last council meeting, council gave us direction to take advantage of the application for electric charging stations for vehicles. We did start down the path of looking at that program through Clean Nova Scotia and have gotten to a point now where we've identified several areas where we could put electronic charging stations, EV charging stations in. Right now, the call of expressions is for areas where that would be beneficial to municipal fleet and staff use of vehicles. So we've narrowed down the list of locations to seven EV charging stations. They're recommending approximately $10,000 per station be budgeted. They have, the, the request will be for 50% funding of those. And there's also a potential to get another 25% funding from another department within government. So although I don't think we expected to move this quickly, there still is no commitment until they go out for an RFP on actually acquiring the stations. But I think, given our conversation around energy and sustainability for municipal infrastructure at the last meeting of council and committee, I think we, I would recommend that we go forward with this application. There is money in a reserve called the Transport Equipment Reserve. Council stopped putting money into that reserve a couple of years ago, but there's $82,000 in there that we could use to fund whatever portion of this comes to fruition. So although the commitment is now, we don't actually have to put these stations in until 2022. So I think you'll have a much better grasp on your commitment to sustainable vehicles and whatnot by 2021 budget. But this will certainly is the infrastructure that's needed if we intend to go to electric vehicles for municipal operations and that kind of thing. So great opportunity to get up to 75% funding, 50% right now, and a good opportunity to move forward.
Just a question, if, so it says for fleet or staff use, but if they're being underutilized, would they be open to the public in the interim?
So through you, Mr. Warden, there's, there are some locations that will naturally be available to the public. So if we are not, if we have them installed and we're not at the point where we have, you know, all four being used at the Lloyd Matheson Center, for example, then, you know, we'd have to make a policy decision, but I don't see why we wouldn't have opened to the public if that were the case.
Councillor McGinnis?
I want to move the motion, thank you.
Seconder, seconded by Councillor Dixon. I have Councillor Rolston to speak.
Yes, I'm just wondering about the locations. And I see one proposed location being in, at the UniAC library and the RCMP spot there, which I don't object to, I think there should be at least one station in that UniAC. But I'm wondering why there are no stations in the rural side of the municipality. I would think perhaps even at the Rodden Police Station. I find it difficult to imagine that four stations would be in use at the Lloyd Matheson Center, at least, at least going into the thing. So I just wonder if those locations, if we pass as, they're carved in stone, because I'm not sure that I 100% agree with all those locations.
CAO, you want to comment?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I think we could add locations to that, to that list, provided that they would be for fleet use, that is one of the requirements of the program. We don't typically have, you know, we could certainly put one in Rodden, and we could certainly put one, Charlie wants to speak, just get her, before I say two.
Shirley, you want to fill us in on that?
Sure. Those specific locations, part of the requirement was two-phase power sourcing, and the, much of the rural area does not have that power capability. So we did actually consider, when the senior management team discussed locations, that Rodden Station was actually one of the ones that was mentioned, as was Burncohead Park. But because of the power sourcing, it won't work in those locations at this time unless Nova Scotia Power changes the power, the way that they run the power lines. And if you do want some other site mentioned, we would have to add it now before we put the application in, because part of this application is we have to supply the GPS coordinates of the sites. So part of the revaluation is they're actually looking at the mapping of where the, the stations will be, right down to the latitude and longitude of the stations. So if you want other locations considered, we would need to do that now.
Councillor Rolston, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I just know that Rainbow Farms, which is not very far from the RCMP station in Rodden, does have two-phase, you know, power. Just a comment, I don't know if it comes just to that particular business and no further, or, or, you know, what it is, I don't know if the station would have to actually be at the RCMP station or not. But I know there is power availability in the region, I just throw that out there. I just, how much of this funding is contingent on it being for fleet use? Is all of the funding contingent on that, or just some of it?
For this round, it's all of it.
Okay. Well, I won't shoot myself in the foot, but I am, you know, I am, I'm a little disappointed in, I guess, in the province making that a prerequisite. If we're trying to go green, I think it should be available to all residents of the municipality and not just particular parts, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, Councillor Rhino?
Just one question, is there any private industry considering these charging stations? And if so, would we be seen as competing with them or buying the product from ourselves and not buying from the, from the private? Just wanted to know, just a question.
Through you, Mr. Warden, these are all on municipally-owned properties, so we wouldn't be in a situation where we would have our municipal vehicles parked, say, at a private location. We wouldn't be competing with them in that respect. And we, we wouldn't likely enter in any kind of service agreement at this point to have private utility folks installing them on municipal property. So I would say no at this point.
So that answers your question, councillor?
Yeah, pretty well, I guess.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on that?
Question.
So we have a question called, we'll go to the vote, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Contrary, motion is passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda would be the, would be committee reports, police advisory committee, councillor Rhino.
The committee held its regular monthly meeting at the executive committee meeting on May the 19th, 2020. Committee, the committee received the RCMP quarterly replacement report. No recommendations are coming forward, and as Chair of the committee, I move the adoption of this report.
It's been moved in seconder, the councillor McGinnis, do you have a comment? You were just seconding, okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further comments? No discussion, ask for the question. Question's been called, raise your right hand, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda would be corporate and residential services, councillor Rolston.
The committee held its regular meeting on May the 19th, 2020 electronically via Zoom. The following motions are coming forward as a result of the meeting. Inclusive washroom and change room policy. At the July 24th, 2019 regular meeting of council, council directed staff to investigate replacing the gender-specific washroom signs to a non-specific version in the upcoming budget. Staff have reviewed applicable legislation and policies and available gender-neutral washroom offerings of other municipalities and organizations of similar size in comparison. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends to council that council adopt the proposed inclusive washroom and change room policy as attached to the May 19th, 2020 executive committee agenda. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Second it.
Been moved in second, is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor, aye. Contrary, motion is passed.
Elections 2020, the municipal elections will proceed as scheduled in October 2020 as directed by the provincial government. Due to COVID-19 and the subsequent restriction on gatherings and the possible long-term need to practice physical distancing and other health considerations, staff and the returning officer are reviewing options of conducting the election. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends to council that council directs staff to draft a bylaw to incorporate the various voting options as discussed at the executive committee meeting held May 19th, 2020. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded. It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion?
Questions?
Seeing none, well, question's been called, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed.
Formal Elm, former Elmsdale School property, CCRE. On May 1st, 2020, the municipality received a request from the, I guess not the school board anymore, but asking the municipality to reconsider a temporary lease of the former Elmsdale School for the purposes of their pre-primary program. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends to council that council direct staff to enter into a lease agreement with the Shinkneto Central Regional Center for Education at the former Elmsdale School property for the purposes of pre-primary programming. As Chair of the committee, I so move. for the purposes of pre-primary programming. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Counselor King, wish to comment?
Yes, I do, Mr. Warden. Thank you. Uh, I think this is a win-win. Uh, it's very centrally located. So for some of our young families with, with pre-primary, uh, it'll be, it'll be quite handy. And now with, uh, Schickneto Central, uh, sharing the costs, uh, of the maintenance of the facility, uh, overall, uh, it, it's a win-win. And I certainly support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Question.
Question.
Question's been called, we'll go to the vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed.
George Field landfill. In response to COVID-19 and current public health order, the Waste Management Center is closed. Council members have received a number of calls from residents asking for the site to be reopened. Committee supported a phased reopening of the site whilst ensuring strict cleanliness and physical distancing measures are implemented to ensure the health and safety of staff and members of the public. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommend to council that council direct staff to begin planning a phased reopening of the Waste Management Center site. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded. We have a seconder. The, uh, any further discussion? Counselor Rhino.
Are we going to get a report on a phased-in approach?
CAO.
Uh, through Mr. Warden, the, um, an email was sent out to counselors today and it was put out on our social media that we have begun a phased-in approach to opening, uh, with opening up on Mondays, as I discussed with counselors last week. Mondays is the day that we don't have commercial haulers from curb site collection coming into the site. So it was the logical first choice of opening. As the public health measures are, um, relaxed around the province and as the state of emergency, unfolds, I guess, continues to unfold, uh, we'll be looking at more opening of the site to the public for various, waste, waste streams to come in. Uh, one thing that we, we have made some progress on our staffing, last week we talked about, um, extra resources at the site. Uh, we're making some progress there. Um, but again, the, the reopening will have, you know, we didn't get here, um, overnight. It's been gradual, uh, back stockpile that folks have to get rid of. So we will be open the, the four Mondays in June, um, for sure. And then as the, as the province rolls out its restrictions and loosens up a few things, we'll be looking at opening more often with the appropriate resources in place for the safety of our staff and the public using the site.
Follow-up, Counselor Rhino.
Yeah. So what I'm not hearing is, I'm only hearing a phase one. I'm not hearing a phase two. I'm not hearing a phase three. All I'm hearing is, is if this goes on, uh, it was posted today. Facebook has lit up, you know, only Mondays. I, I, and I agree with the people. I think it should be open on Saturdays for those people who are still working and there is an awful lot of people working out there. It does take care of, of the, uh, people that are still home doing these, doing these reservations, renovations and so on and so forth. But it doesn't address the people that are still working. And with today, with the announcement that, uh, June 5th, a number of, uh, businesses are going to reopen. I'm not hearing a phase two. I'm not hearing a phase three. I'm only hearing a phase one and that's, this is the plan. So I'm really not happy with not hearing that and some kind of plan, because the people are asking, when's it going to open? Just to say whenever the government wants us to, is it to me, is, is, is not a complete plan.
Well, I think it, uh, the, the staff said it's going to be four weeks of, uh, Mondays and then they'll move into phase two. I think four weeks is lots of time to, uh, adjust into whatever the schedule is going to be. Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I agree with Keith. If people can't social distance in a small restaurant, I think there should be all social distance in a big, in a big landfill and I, I, I understand like you're worried about the staff and their health and we, everybody's worried, but you're not going to shut for forever for that, because everybody's going to open up soon. Thank you.
Counselor Rolston.
Now, um, I would not like to see us locked into only opening on Mondays for the full month of June. Things may change rapidly. Um, I hear where Keith is coming from, because there are a lot of folks out there, but Saturday would be the day that they could go. And, uh, I'm thinking it might not be a bad thing to have two days to choose from. And those that could go on Monday would go and others could go on Saturday and it might, uh, it might help with the backlog somewhat of everyone trying to get there at once. So, uh, I guess, um, you know, I'd, I'd like us to continue to look at this and not tie us into just opening the four Mondays in June. And, you know, just have the flexibility, because the government didn't order us to close the landfill. If I understand correctly, we made that decision ourselves. So we don't have to wait for the government to tell us to reopen. You know, we, we will make that decision the same as we made the decision to close. So th, those are my comments. As I said, I'm, I'm happy to see it opening on Mondays. Like the other counselors, I'm not sure that's going to entirely work for the public. And, uh, I would not want to see us saying we're going to open the four Mondays in June and then nothing be done for the whole month of June to look at opening other days in June. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Hip.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, uh, I agree with the other counselors and, uh, just a suggestion, maybe, uh, since this is a starting point, maybe the first next two Saturdays, we can, or next two Mondays, we can go. But then after that, maybe we, we can look at opening it up on Saturday and Monday. And, uh, that way there, the public would have a, an idea that there is going to be a Saturday opener at some point. But, uh, to go all the way through, I've, I've got about eight calls now since this pandemic came down and, and, uh, a lot of people's been asking questions. So, uh, there is a need to have it open for sure. And I appreciate the fact that they're opening it on Monday for sure, but to go the full, whole month of June, just on Mondays. I, I think if we could go maybe just two Mondays to start and then phase in on a Saturday too, would be, be my preference. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I agree with my co-counsel. I, I think opening it on a Saturday would actually take some of the stress off the Monday. Um, but I do understand there's some staffing issues. But like Counselor Heav has said, uh, maybe we could start with the, the, uh, soft opening on Mondays for a couple of weeks and then ease into, uh, adding the Saturdays. Um, I do appreciate all the work that staff has done. Um, I know these are really trying times. But again, I would, I'm hoping, um, we could add another day for people who are working through the week. Those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Deputy Warden Perry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I kind of looked at it as that the Mondays are going to be open for sure. But as the situation changed, and we know it's changing rapidly, our staff has always been flexible and we've always done a good job of adjusting with the times. So if in a week or two, things change, I would expect that staff would, would also change and, and move with that as they have for a lot of other things that have happened over the last three months in our municipality. And again, make things available, uh, when it is safe and when it can be done in a, a proper manner. Because the last thing we want is to have an incident or accident or something else happen and, uh, us be in a really bad situation at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Counselor Dixon.
Yes, just like to support the other counselors. I think opening on Saturday as soon as possible would be beneficial. I've had a few calls like other counselors to, uh, you know, be able to return or dispose of items there. So I would encourage staff, if you can do it, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Counselor Rhino.
So we don't have another executive till the third week in June. Now, if, if we don't put something in an amendment to open on Saturdays in, in two weeks' time, you know, we, we still could be at that four weeks in June. Uh, I, I would like to move an amendment so that in two weeks' time, with that, we extend that opening till Saturdays. So move.
Uh, I'm going to rule that out of order, because it's a direction to staff that I don't think we have the power to do.
It's an amendment.
I'm ruling it out of order.
How can you rule amendment out of order?
I'm doing it. We only have one employee. You can give her direction to look at it, but you can't tell her what to do. Counselor McGinnis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. The, the motion is actually to direct staff to begin planning a phased reopening in the Waste Management Center. So I don't see that there's room for amending that, when what we're asking is to try and plan that faster. And there's no way that we can predict how fast they can plan that. So, uh, I'll support the motion as it is. Thank you.
And that's exactly why I ruled it out of order.
Question on the motion.
Question's been called, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary.
Nay.
Motion is passed. Counselor Rolston and Rhino.
Or, no, I was wishing to speak, sorry.
Okay. So Counselor Rhino voting nay. Counselor Rolston, you wish to speak?
Uh, I wonder if it would be appropriate to craft another motion, uh, directing staff to move as quickly as possible with this phased reopening based on the discussion we've had tonight.
CAO.
Counselors, I, I understand the need to get this site reopened and I understand where everybody's coming from and I understand where the public is coming from. We will do what we can to get this site reopened as quickly as we can. I don't, um, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to put up roadblocks or put up walls to not open the site again. We just need to make sure we do it appropriately. And the, you know, the, the difficulty with some of these government announcements is, you know, they're made and then all of a sudden, everything's okay to do. Uh, we need time to react to those announcements. So, um, I understand restaurants and bars and, and it does seem, you know, why can't you reopen a, a waste management site? I have human resource issues that I need to manage. I need to book people's overtime if we're going to work on Saturdays. I need to do all those things. I will, I will work to get that site reopened as quickly as I can. I don't need, you can, you can make a motion to do that, but, I understand where you're all coming from.
Counselor Rolston, you wish to proceed with your motion?
Um, I, I, I don't think it can hurt to have it on the books, so.
Okay. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Rhino. Can I have it rewritten so everyone understands what it is?
Uh, just to move that, uh, staff be given directly, direction to, um, to, uh, have the phased reopening proceed as quickly as possible based on discussions we've had at this and our previous meeting.
Counselor McGinnis.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Warden. I, I don't feel a need to support the motion. I, I, I support the, the, the philosophy of it. Uh, but I really feel like there's, um, plenty of pressure and understanding of what we need. So I, I won't be supporting that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smith.
Uh, yes, I agree with Counselor McGinnis. I won't be supporting the motion either. I, I feel it's getting too pushy, um, trying to tell staff what to do. I feel that staff are going to do the best job they possibly can. We've told them, you know, or shared our concerns about, what our residents are telling us and, um, I think they're going to do the best job they possibly can. And so I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rhino.
Yeah, there's been some discussion on your staffing with regard to this. So, I mean, no staffing issues would have been present if, uh, COVID had not been, uh, taken place. So how would we deal with those staffing, you know, if COVID hadn't take place? We'd still have to deal with them and we still have the notebook, my point.
I believe some of the staffing issues are related to COVID. I don't think we can probably do that in a public forum, but, uh, if someone wants to go on camera to discuss it, but I think both the staff deficiencies are a result of COVID. Counselor Rolston.
Uh, I just want to say that I don't doubt that staff is going to move as quickly as possible to do this. I just feel as with many other things, that if we just talk about it in a meeting and staff is supposed to do it, then I think it's our job, you know, if we want to give them direction, I think it's our job to give them. And there's a motion to go back and refer to. And if, uh, anything were to, you know, happen one way or the other, then staff has that comfort level of saying, we were following a motion of council, not, we were following discussion held at council. And that's why, but I felt it was worthwhile making the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll ask for the question.
Question.
Questions been called, all in favor, right hand? I have one, two, three in favor. Contrary?
Nay.
Nay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The motion has failed. And I'm sure staff will take it into consideration. Counselor Rolston, your report.
Uh, yes, um, that concludes my report. As Chair of the committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed. Next item on the agenda would be Parks, Recreation and Culture. Counselor Rhino.
Committee held its regular meeting on May the 19th, 2020 electronically via Zoom. The following motion is coming forward as a result of the meeting. District Recreation Fund second intake, April 2020. The sec, the second District Recreation Fund intake deadline was April the 30th, 2020. The two applications received total $28,855 in requested funds. The applications were reviewed by the grant committee and evaluated against the District Recreation Fund policy. The two applications met policy requirements. So from that, the Parks and Recreation and Culture Committee recommends to council that council approved district recreation funding for 2020 and 2021. Intake two totaling $15,453 is follows. Chuban Akity Home and School Association from District Four, $4,098. From District Five, $2,500 for a total of $6,598. Another one is Enfield Elmsdale and District Lions Club from District Ten, $3,133. From District Two, $3,000. From District One, $2,722 for a total of $8,855. As Chair of the committee, I do so move.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, we'll go to the vote, all in favor, aye.
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 Contrary, motion is passed.
As Chair of the committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Seconded.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question. Questions been called, all in favor, aye.
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 Contrary, motion is passed. The, uh, next item would be Planning Advisory Committee, Counsel Green.
Thank you, Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on May 19th, 2020 electronically via Zoom. The following motions are coming forward as a result of the meeting. Item one, Clayton Development's WCDD proposal. The municipality has been reviewing an application from the Shaw Group Limited since 2018 to enter into a development agreement for a mixed-use master plan development for their WCDD zoned land. Based on that review, public input and negotiations with the applicant, staff have prepared a draft development agreement for council's consideration. As a result of concerns expressed at PAC, the applicant has decided to remove the multi-unit residential block J from their proposal. This land would then be added to the proposed riverfront park. Although not included in their letter of May 21st, the applicant is also requesting that the development agreement include a clause to allow for multi-unit residential in the commercial area identified as Block One by unsubstantial amendment. This would enable them to request this amendment should the markets not sustain all of their commercial land. An unsubstantial amendment has to be approved by council. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council that council authorize staff to schedule a public hearing for the application by the Shaw Group Limited to enter into a development agreement for their WCDD lands. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion is passed.
Item two, sustainability initiatives. At the February 26th, 2020 regular meeting of council, staff were directed to prepare an initial report on sustainability initiatives for East Hands. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council that council invite the Colchester Sustainability Coordinator to present to council at an executive committee meeting. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Been moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all in favor?
Aye.
As Chair of the committee, I move the, sorry, Warden.
Contrary, it was all good. The, uh, motion is passed.
As Chair of the committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Questions been called. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed. The, the next item would be first reading of bylaw, A101 Amendment to Bylaw, A100 Alternative Voting Bylaw. Who's got that one?
Connie.
Hi Connie. Welcome.
I think I have to move the motion though.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Rolston.
It's gone.
You wish to report then before?
I think we have to move the motion. Can we share the screen with the motion?
Chair Lee?
Is that it there?
No. Hey. Well now I'm confused. I thought we'd had the report at committee and we had given notice of motion and we were simply moving first reading at this meeting, but.
Through you, Madam, Mr. Warden. The, the bylaw wasn't drafted at the meeting. We discussed options, so there is a bylaw attached to your agenda. Connie had a staff report that she was going to take through as your returning officer.
Connie?
Okay, so, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. So, as Kim suggested, there was quite a number of ideas tossed around at the committee about what we could do to run the election, given the COVID situation. And many of the ideas that I had put forward to council at that time had not been vetted by legal. So after the committee meeting, the instruction was given to come back, bring back a draft bylaw that incorporated the ideas that were discussed that day. So we have vetted this with legal counsel. The, so the various options that this bylaw offer you, and I guess I would seek direction whether you want me to go through the draft bylaw in its entirety, but the options that it does offer you are the ones that were there before, which would be internet voting and telephone voting. In this case, telephone voting could be something very different than what was envisioned when the bylaw was first drafted, so it could be a very simplistic telephone vote, if that's what you choose. Counsel had also mentioned on committee day that they liked the idea of just simply adding more advanced polling days. So that ability has been added to the bylaw. The ability to do what we're referring to as alternative voting, proxy voting. So proxy voting continues to exist in the act. This bylaw would allow for a different form or an additional form of proxy voting, which would be the appointment by a proxy voter, an alternative voting proxy voter that could do multiple votes for multiple people. The other one we talked about was the drive-through option. That's been incorporated into the bylaw. The one that we're not recommending, and then we did have some discussion on a mobile polling station. The reason we're not recommending that is because of the potential overwhelming, I guess, of, of human resource in order to do that, so. When we really discussed that with the CAO and with legal counsel, we felt that the proxy voting, between drive-through voting and proxy voting, we probably were offering the best opportunity to allow people to vote. And that mobile, a mobile polling station perhaps didn't add a lot to that because they do have the option to vote through proxy voting, if council so chooses. So, and, and we were very nervous that that could overwhelm the system if, if many, many people asked to have a mobile polling station option, which would have been, which would really include us going to their home and letting them vote. The other thing is that council does not have to decide tonight which of these options they wish. That could be decided in July, once the bylaw is passed. This bylaw is permissive, so it would allow you in any given election to choose between the types of alternative voting that you want to use. You make that decision and then those processes are put in place. So even though you may pass the bylaw, for example, with all provisions in there, including mobile, you, you could then decide not to use some or all of those, or to use all of them. It would be up to council. But at this point, there was two versions of the draft bylaw. One had the option for a mobile voting station in there, and one did not, and we are recommending the one without the option of a mobile voting station, polling station. The rest of the information in the report is simply some of the discussion we've had around how we would deal with sanitation in the halls that we're able to do that in. If you wished me to go through the draft bylaw and point out some of the features that have been added to the bylaw to allow all these options to happen, I can do that, but you know, there's changes in definition and changes in the various sections. What we have to be able to do, as was recommended by legal counsel, is to ensure that all of the controls that are in a regular election are in the various forms of alternative voting, which we've done. And we have to make sure that the bylaw is clear, that the provisions of the Elections Act are either overridden by this bylaw or continue to exist on top of this bylaw. And where necessary, we have done that as well. Happy to go through the, the actual bylaw if that's the wish of council.
Counsel, do you need any further information, or are we ready to, someone to make a motion on an option? Counsel Rolston?
I just have a question, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to be perfectly clear that this, this bylaw keeps the option of telephone and electronic voting on the table for when we do decide what we want to do, because looking ahead, we don't know if or when there will be a second wave of this virus. And I think we need to be prepared to allow people to vote from the comfort and safety of their homes if we're within a second wave and if the province continues to, you know, insist that the election should proceed as currently scheduled.
That's correct.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Question. We, we have a list of options, but we wouldn't be restricted to any or one of them. It simply would be a, a list of options that we can, we can select from in the bylaw?
You can select none of them, you can select all options. That would be your choice, and that, that really, that choice doesn't have to be made until July.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Any further discussion? Looking for someone to make a motion on an option. Counselor Dixon?
I'll make the motion, recommend motion.
Which option?
That we, can you go back up to the top one there, please? The council give first reading to bylaw A101 and Amendment to Bylaw A100 Alternative Voting Bylaw.
Second.
Moved in second. I don't know if we were a little out of sync on that or not, but.
It's okay.
The, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Warden, is, is this the version without mobile polling station?
Is that the intent, Counselor? Yes. So it's the, the option without the mobile polling?
Thank you.
The, I see no further discussion. I'll ask for the question. All in favor? Aye.
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 Contrary, the motion is passed. Thank you. The next item would be first reading of bylaw P1200 Amendment to Bylaw Lot Grading, Respecting Grading and Drainage. Who's got that one? I guess I do, Warden. First reading bylaw P-1200 Amendment to Bylaw Lot Grading, Respecting Grading and Drainage. At their April 29th meeting, council gave authorization to planning staff to consult with the East Hands Development Community regarding proposed lot grainy, grading and drainage bylaw amendments. The consultation took place through a digital newsletter emailed to the development community. Two comments were received by staff. One, RYC Property Limited indicated that they thought the proposed amendment seemed like a good idea. And two, Bob Bona from Bona Investments and Enfield Investments and Enher Distributions questioned the $5,000 deficiency deposit. No major changes have been proposed to the bylaw since it was presented to PAC in April. Therefore, first reading of bylaw P1200 Lot Grading and Drainage Bylaw is now being requested. I move the council give first reading to bylaw P-1200 and Amendment to Bylaw Lot Grading, Respecting Grading and Drainage. As Chair of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question?
Question?
Seeing none, the questions been called. We'll go to the vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed. Thank you. The next item would be business from Warden, and I pass the chair over to Deputy Warden Perry.
That's a long path.
Go ahead, Mr. Warden.
Depends on how your screen's laid out. The, thank you. It, I, I guess, wearing a couple of hats here, it's been a fairly busy, busy month. The, we've had three NSFM board meetings, plus we have a weekly update from the NSFM for mayors and wardens and CAOs every Wednesday night, so for this month, I guess that would be a total of eight meetings that some of them, the one we were on last night, didn't get done till we started forward, didn't get done till eight. There's been a lot of discussion with the province on various issues, including the election. I don't know how many counselors participated in the NSFM poll that they did over, it was very late coming out. It only came out last Thursday. We had about a 70% return, which is about 30 over the average engagement that we have with counselors from the NSFM. And we had a 70% in favor of delay in the election. There's been several letters go out to the minister. I think one has been posted. The other one just went out today, and it probably hasn't made it to our correspondence yet, but the, there's some fairly strong worded messages coming from the NSFM concerning the relationship with municipalities and the province during the weekly updates from the mayor's wardens and CAOs. The last week, they started bringing guests, so we had Minister Porter on for, he was, he graced us with his presence for a whole 10 minutes and didn't take questions, and he did assure us that the $25,000 we share across the province for beautification will go forward this year, so. Following him, Dr. Strang come on and did a fabulous report. He stayed on for more than an hour. He did like a 20-minute presentation that is available, I think, on the NSFM's website. And he answered questions extensively and was a very good report. Previous to the meeting tonight, there was also a meeting, and Bernie Miller, the minister, the deputy minister of business, also did a report and did a fabulous job, and when I left to come onto this meeting, he'd already been into a half hour of questions and about how business was going to open and was very informed and really shed some light on to some of the things that are going to happen, but that would be all I have to report, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take.
The, no questions. I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Warden.
Alright, thank you. So the next item would be business from counselors, and I get a, I, I'm not stuck in council chambers, so I can go around in different screens. I'm going to start on my screen up on the far left, Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just have a question for staff, and I don't know which department can answer it. So we have, we have a road here. It's called Sawdust Road. And I, I sent Jesse an email about it, so I don't know if you could say something about it.
Uh, sure. Through Chair, Sawdust Road is a private road, and so the, the question was around, what was the status? Was it a provincial road or a private road and boat access, because the community's been using it for lake access for Cox Gom Lake some, as long as 30 years. Apparently, there's some potential either in place or someone putting up a, a gate to block that off, and whether it's allowed or not. I'm not sure on the status of, of gate. It is a private road. It's, it's it's private property per se. There are some things looked at from a planning stance, so I might have John, John comment if, if, if he's reviewed it or not. I, I picked him a note as well, but it is a private road for sure. Not a public road, so doesn't have the same government, like the municipality, traffic authority, or TIR enforcement wouldn't apply per se. So it would only be if we had any bylaws preventing or not, or easements in place, which I'm not certain of, of whether we could block them from blocking boat access.
Yeah.
Throw it.
Yeah. Go ahead, John. Thank you, Mr. Warden. The, I, I looked very quickly. I, it wasn't an exhaustive search, because I remember this issue did come up in the past when private roads, people put up gates. And I know in certain development agreements, like in the Cottage Country Development Agreement, they're not allowed to put up gates. But I couldn't find anything in my brief search here in the bylaw that would indicate, you know, a regular private road that they couldn't put up a gate, so I think they could. I, I'm not 100% sure on that. I guess I can send, send something up by email tomorrow, perhaps.
I'll leave it with you, John. Thank you very much.
Is that all, Counselor?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A, a couple of things that I received quite a few calls on both of them, and I really appreciate staff helping me with them. One was Percy's Lane, which is a private lane in Elmstale. A lot of calls. It's, it's badly run it out, et cetera, and I believe staff contacted a lot of the homeowners and I, I think offered them options, what they can do is, is private homeowners on a private lane. I believe that would be correct, Jesse?
Correct. Via phone and in person. There was team members that were able to, to contact people on, on the road itself.
Thank you very much. I mean, even in my four-wheel-drive truck, I could barely get up Percy's Lane, so certainly knew where they were, were coming from, even though it wasn't a, a municipal matter. The other one, Meadowview, it was ruts and dust, et cetera, and I, and I think staff, your department, Jesse, I, I think we're, we're right on top of that, so. Can you just very, very briefly what the response was on, on those calls?
Certainly. So, I'm, I'm getting the, yes, I apologize. I'm getting the street names mixed up. There's been a lot of topics in the last couple of weeks. Meadowview being dust control.
In Belland, it's the one that's not paved.
Okay. So, so from a dust control stance, we've been working with our contractor. They were giving us a seven-to-ten day timeline from about 10 days ago on when the First Circuit would get around on grading and dust control. That said, is midweek. Last week, we were getting notifications of some supply chain issues related to COVID-19 on calcium chloride acquisition, so that was causing some delays and some of the issues of why we hadn't gotten out a little bit sooner. So that, that's a factor. So we're in contact and getting updates every couple of days. Now just seeing on what actually took place and what's happening and how are things holding up, because some adjustments had to ma, be made that we normally wouldn't have had to have thought, think through.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Is that all, Counselor?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Counselor McGinnis?
Thank you, Warden. Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Rhino?
Just one thing. There was an incident in Counsel Green's area there a week or so ago, and it brought up a lot of Facebook chatter with regard to boat launches. And they, you know, stating there was, you know, boat launches, public boat launches between mainland and down the shore. And, and I remember, if I'm correct, that we did talk about them in some kind of plan at one time. I'm just wondering if Kate can. at one time, I'm just wondering if Kate can, you know, refresh and see if, if there's any planning toward that, or anything, so on that, I appreciate that.
Okay, or Adam, I see Adam's up, I don't know who wanted to comment.
Well, through, through you, Mr. Chair, it is identified in the Parks Master Plan. It, we, we, when we see opportunities for land acquisitions that would accomplish those goals, we certainly pursue them, but there just hasn't been anything that would become available that we know of. Adam, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, just to add into there, through you, Mr. Warden, through councils, oh, capital planning, I believe it's flagged within the, the five-year horizon, within council's capital plan, so it isn't something that we have acted on just yet, but council did identify it in their capital planning process.
Oh, could, we can't, can we narrow it down to when we, we would take an active look at this, you know, just because, you know, it makes you think that there is no public boat launches, and, and if something were to happen, or if people want to use that pay for pleasure purposes, I think that would be a selling feature to tourism in this area also.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, I, I think what we, we would have to, the initial, I guess, piece of, of work that has to happen is really to identify areas, land, or areas of land that we could acquire that would give us that type of boat access. And as I mentioned, we just haven't, when, we, we've looked fairly actively over the past few years, but nothing has really become apparent to us in terms of what we may want to bring back to council for your approval, but certainly, it is paramount in our minds, and I think we, it remains active for us, we know it is something that we, you know, would like to have happen up there, but it's just not something that has become apparent to us.
Okay, so laws is still on the radar, I guess.
Yep.
Okay.
Perhaps the, the area counselors of that area, if they know anybody that might have a piece of land that would work, maybe could forward that to staff so that they could possibly move forward.
Very good.
Counselor Rolston.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dixon.
Hey, Mr. Warden, just a couple of things here, I've had inquiries about George Field, that's been handled, I've had some positive people, happy that we're working with the Attacks Assistance Program, and I've had more calls than last week or two, because involved with the Sports Flex about what's going on there, so I've directed those calls back to the Sports Flex, because we're not actually associated, we're not part of their directors. And the last thing, I'd like to send a sympathy out to the family of Dr. Bruce Montgomery, who was tragically killed in the motorcycle accident last Friday night. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to just make a comment, a brief comment with regards to the Dome, I, I was speaking to Scott today, and, and the plan right now is, if borders open up, the contractors will be coming down from Ontario, I believe, in August, that's an-ish plan, as we know, because we can't foresee the future. I do have a question for Jesse regarding naming the interchange, can you tell me about that process?
Naming the interchange? So, honestly, no, but we could get some information and send that to counsel, I'm actually in calls with T I R nonstop this week, so I could have that answer pretty quick, and I, I can send that out to everyone.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is, I've seen some conversation happening on Facebook, and I did receive two phone calls, people are a little bit upset, they've heard that Margaret Miller, the M L A, would like to name the interchange after the tragedy of April 18th and 19th, and call it Connector 22 or something, and there's a lot of, I'll say, not a, a very good feeling around that, so I was just wondering if someone could look into that, so it doesn't go too far without having community input.
Got that, Jesse?
Thank you. And one more thing, beautification funds, and I guess this question would be to Adam, has past practice been that we could share the beautification funds with another district?
Just to clarify through you, Mr. Warden, it's the council's beautification grant or the, the community grant?
Beautification.
I might defer that to the, the C A O or Cheryl Lee, as that process is administered through the C A O's office.
Thank you, Adam.
Kim or Shirley?
Shirley, want me to take that one? The policy is councils, it is your discretionary fund, if you agreed that you wanted to share funding through your beautification funding, you can certainly do that, I can't say that it's necessarily been widely shared in the past, but you certainly could do that if you had an agreement with another, another district.
Okay, thank you. I'll be bringing that up at, in July again, thank you. And that's all for tonight.
Yeah. Deputy Warden Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, just only one thing on my topic tonight, there was a little rile in the community of Mount Uniac over, houses shaking here about a week ago, due to blasting that out the quarry, and I'd like to thank staff for getting back to me on the answers of the process, for the public to engage and loister this pleasure, they, they pointed us in the right direction, gave us a clarification where it needed to go, and I received a couple of phone calls after I returned them, people were happy to get that information, again, they were a little disappointed that we couldn't do anything, I told them it was the province's purview to control that, I know that it was Scottish private environment, and they were taking it there, but I want to thank staff for returning that quickly to me, it definitely helped aid some people and gave them a place to go, so thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Counselor Heth.
Thank you, Warden, I have a couple of things I want to bring up, and first of all, through you to Jesse, I noticed the other day Madison Court was graded, and when it was chloride, when they come out to the end, they shut the pump off, but they didn't shut the valve off, and the chloride was sprayed from the road all the way down to Grumple Drive and where they were in there. Now, that's not a major concern, because it dries out, but the first time there's a rain, that stuff is just like snot, it really goes slippery, and there's really no turns there, but there's motorcycles that travel there too, so whoever's doing the spraying is certainly either inexperienced, or there was a flaw there somewhere, so maybe if you can get a hold of the haulers, just to make sure that doesn't happen again. And the other thing, Mr. Warden, is a, I've got a question I'd like to propose to the C A O, but I think it's better done in, in camera, if, if I could be allowed, when we go in camera?
Sure, depending, we'll go in camera and we'll rule on it within camera, and we'll go.
I'll just bring it up when we, when you call me, and if it's appropriate, it's fine, if not, it's okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is that all, Counselor?
That's all, yes.
Counselor Green.
Thank you, Warden, yeah, the boat launch is just the tip of the iceberg of discussions that have been happening this weekend in my district, there's a whole bigger can of worms here regarding burn coat, the park is open, no staff there, this turned out to be a false alarm, there was nobody on the beach at that time, it was, somebody thought they seen somebody on the beach, it involved quite an intensive search by the fire departments between us and Kennicock, and I will be bringing some stuff forward at a later date, I'm gonna, I would like to have a meeting with Kim to discuss some issues there around the park and that, from a fire department and from a council point of view.
Sure, that can happen, Counselor.
Yep.
Mr. Warden, just to bring counsel back into the discussions we had on burn coat from last month, we have arranged for an opening, not with tours on the ocean floor and whatnot, but a full opening of the parks towards the middle to end of June, I think we said the 26th-ish is what we're aiming for, to get staff in place and to get the parks open. We are open right now with signage in place, but we do plan on opening those parks with additional staff, both Fundy Title and Burn Coat, for some of those very reasons.
That's all I have. Okay, thank you. Well, that would conclude business from counselors, the next item would be to set the time and date of the next council meeting, June 16th, policy and due 24th regular meeting of council. So moved. Second, any further discussion? Question?
Question.
Seeing none, no question, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed, the next item would be a in-camera session for contractual issue and another land issue, and possibly another one that Counselor Heth is going to raise, I've looked for a motion to go in camera.
So moved.
Eli seconded by Cecil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed, we'll just take a second to get the recording stopped.